All right.
Good evening, everyone, to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for the August 8, 2023 meeting. First order in the agenda is called to the order and then second place of allegiance. Please stand up.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where we sustain one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next is the local.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
President.
Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Gerhurth, here. Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Malinato is asked it with excuse. Alder Strausman.
Here.
Alder Wheeler. I'm sorry, Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is public appearances for non-agenda items. We have a couple of people that I want to speak tonight. The first is the ACAC Wisconsin Engineer Excellence Best of State of World presentation. So we have people from KLE Engineer here, Sam Mike. So do you want to tell us about what is this award? Yeah.
Get right up here, please. So, thank you, Mayor, Council and city staff. It's a pleasure for us to be here. So we're recognizing city with ACC Award for the Fish Hatcher Road Project. My name is Mike Skarman. I'm with KLE Engineering. It was great fortune to be part of the project. With me is Sam Gerheim. Also played a huge part for KLE on the project. I did want to give a little bit of background. I don't want to take a ton of time, but just to kind of recognize that, you know, starting back in 2016, this was a pretty basic routine type of project initially visioned as kind of just a pavement rehab, which blossomed kind of with the visioning of the city into a more corridor revitalization, kind of brand new, fully reconstructed infrastructure, improvements for all modes of transportation, new development, new community connections, improvements and upgrades to technology and sustainability. So really a transformational project. Construction started in 2020, went for two full years, completed in November of '21. Total cost came in right around $30 million. We're proud to say that came in about three quarters of a million dollars less than what the city had budgeted. So we want to recognize for a project of this size to get done in four years, and that window of time is a huge accomplishment for the city. So we're presenting tonight two awards. First is the American Council of Engineering Companies in Wisconsin. So this is the Engineering Excellence Award. This is given to projects with recognition of engineering creativity. And really, it stands out amongst a crowd of very high-profile projects. Kind of this year recognized amongst things like Camp Rannell renovation, Beltline Flex Lane. So it's a big deal. And our other one is the ACC National Recognition Award. So similar recognition for, you know, important projects, but at the national level, up against similar high-profile projects all across the nation. So while we're here, we do want to recognize that the project also won awards from the American Public Works Association, the APWA Project of the Year Award in 2022, and the American Society of Civil Engineers Wisconsin. That was in the fall of 2022. So to win all these awards for one project is a huge distinction and something the city should really be proud of. So lastly, just a note of gratitude for this project. It was a real honor for KLE Engineering to be part of. It took an absolute ton of people, from the contractors to the suppliers, to the city staff and agencies, public businesses, everybody played a huge part. So thank you. Congratulations, Fitchburg, on your awards.
Should we do a quick follow-up?
We're going to go in the council chambers, but we need to take a recess.
Okay.
Quick.
Okay.
Because we want to have the entire council.
So I want to thank KLE Engineer before we go there for, you know, I was part of the group that we started, do you remember? For two years, we met several times and it was, it was a lot of feedback, input from the community and you guys did an excellent job and I want to say thank you. You're a great partner with the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If I may, there's one other item for non-agenda.
Okay.
And so if we could make that presentation so both of those can be taken.
Okay, so, okay. So next we have Jason Ludwig that he wants to speak and we don't know because it's surprise.
So on May 24th of this year, the Professional Firefighters of Wisconsin hosted Fire Ops 301 at Masson College and the mayor and Gabby graciously attended that day. So we have a plaque for them along with a letter from President Malin Mitchell, state president and President Local 311. So if you guys want to come up here and we can present you with your plaques.
Thank you.
And in this letter is a website with all the photos from the day. So you guys can have that stuff.
Okay. What are these ladies?
If I may, real quick, this is something Local 311 and actually PFSW did the heavy lift on this class and it does provide a significant exposure to the work that our firefighters do. Another one is going to be offered in what, two or three years?
Four years.
Or four?
Four years.
However, in talking with our new division chief, Mark Mecklisch, he is going to be working on doing a community-type academy to be able to provide something similar, also to provide our community with skills like CPR, extinguishers, stuff that they can use at home. And that information is forthcoming. A lot of effort went into this. Very grateful for Local 311 to be able to put this on and I would highly encourage participation in the future.
Definitely do it next time.
Thank you, guys. It was a great opportunity for us to participate in it. Thank you very much.
Give it your efforts.
So then we have to go to the chamber?
Do you want to have Mr. Colgar speak first and then we could do that?
Yeah.
Since it's a non-agenda.
Next, we have Vicky Colgar. She wants to speak and I to refer to the hall.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vicky Colgar. I live over on Trace Way where the whole project is underway. And I've been over in the area now for about seven years. On and off, I've heard about this project, but nothing was, you know, in stone or anything. So recently, right now, I'm directly in front of where you all are planning on tearing up and putting in a bike and skateboard ramp thing around, basketball court center. I'm not opposed to the center and I have a petition over here where several people have signed that are against it. Because over there, there's a senior building that's directly across. There's no children, there's maybe five, that I've watched since they were little kids right there in the area. There's resident cranes that go through. There's in the fall, geese migrating, there's rabbits and all sorts of things. People walk their dogs. People do just walk through there. And what I feel and what a lot of others feel, we weren't given any notice really or any consideration as to what we might need in the area. The area that you all are going in would be nice to have a dog park in there or a community garden. The senior building that's across the street, they have to come outside with their own chairs in order to sit down. So building the center and places to sit would be nice, but putting the basketball court and all of that, it's what a lot of us feel that I've talked to, it's going to create some forms of problems. There's a liquor store that's directly on the corner. And when the guys get through playing basketball or while they're playing basketball, they'll go into that grocery, I mean, the liquor store. And, I mean, we know of the problems that go on in Ever Park and Penn Park. And right now, the area that I live in and many others in the area is peaceful. So I'm wondering if there's any way that it could be revised and some other things may take a look at or even ask the community what they might want and need because we weren't given any kind of consideration. So, I mean, I don't know if I'm too late and I'm really, like I say, just really finding out that you all are totally into the making of it. I talked to a lady this past Thursday that was out there for the drainage. And I've spoken to several officials about it and, I mean, what I'm saying right now about the resident cranes, the rabbits, the kids and everything. And I was told that the area isn't large enough for a dog park. But if you're going to put in a playground, a basketball court, a center, it's large enough for a dog park. And, I mean, that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to say something for the record is that I agree with you and I just want to let you know since I've been on council, we were told that the community had a lot of input into this as far as what went into that part.
I think we can acknowledge in that conversation.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to put it on record because I find it disturbing.
Right. I did too, so thank you very much. And if anyone, I could give my email address, my phone number, my name, be contacted whereas I could contact other residents. With my leg, I haven't been able to get all around like I wanted to get, but I do have several signatures and phone numbers of residents in the area.
Thank you very much.
All right. Yes.
Do you have her registration form?
We get a motion to recess?
We need a motion to recess.
Second in motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. So next is our agenda, is the consent agenda. So does anyone want to pull up anything from the agenda?
Second in motion.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next is Administrator Report.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're enjoying your more cozy crew this evening. We appreciate your flexibility as we work our way through some AV issues. As some of you who are here for Finance Committee are aware, the city has installed some new AV equipment in the council chambers. Unfortunately, the initial test run ran into some technical difficulties, so we are obviously here in the ceiling meeting room so that we can still broadcast this meeting to our community. Hopefully, for our meeting in two weeks, all of the technical issues will be resolved and we'll be back in the chambers. Some events for everyone want to be aware of. Tomorrow evening is a business after, after work, if you will, event being put on by the Chamber of Commerce. That'll be at the Delta Beer Lab from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Police Department is hosting their annual Community Night Out on August 16th from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in McKee Farms Park. The Agora Art Fair is returning on August 19th, just down from City Hall on East Sherrill Parkway. The last concert of the season at McKee Farms Park will be on August 21st. I believe the opening act is at 6:00 p.m. And there will be a distribution of 40th Anniversary Cookies in honor of the city's 40th anniversary as a city. The Recreational Department is hosting a movie night on Thursday, August 24th in Southdale Park. The movie will begin at 7:45. Folks are encouraged to bring blankets, chairs and snacks. Some road construction updates. There's some, two items on the council agenda regarding resurfacing in the event that those items are moved forward and approved by council this evening. We would anticipate road resurfacing beginning later this month and continuing into October. The Sine Road Project, I think I've mentioned before that there have been some delays related to utility relocation. Those have been completed. Some curb and gutter has actually gone in there and Engineering is anticipating paving beginning in a couple of weeks on Sine Road. So hopefully there will be some resolution, at least at the intersection of Sine and Lacy. And once that area is complete, they'll move on to East Sherrill and Sine to do traffic signal installation there. And that work is anticipated to be completed by the end of October. So we appreciate everyone's patience who either utilizes or lives near Sine Road. The Lacy Road Project, the Lacy Road Seminole Highway Roundabout is currently on schedule for the most part. Was over there today taking a look and there's a lot of concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk that has been installed and the roundabout is clearly taking shape there as well. The rest of that project, Lacy Road Off to the West, is also currently on schedule and slated for completion by November or so. And then last two items, as a reminder, the staffing study that was completed by Baker Tilly and was shared with council on Friday. Baker Tilly will be here doing a presentation to the Personnel Committee tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 p.m. And the final item for you folks tonight is the city has hired a deputy city administrator. His name is Adam Sayer. He most recently spent 10 years working for the city of Verona in a couple of different capacities, one of which was city administrator. And he will begin with the city on September 25th. Any questions for me at all?
Oh, shout out.
I have any questions?
Sure.
So the Lacy Road where, and Petrona, when is that intersection or Seminole going to be opened back up again?
So, yeah, we're hoping the intersection of Lacy and Seminole will reopen right around September 1st. So ideally, it will open in time for school. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate and all the other components, but that's the intended time. So, yeah, we're trying to avoid any back-to-school complications.
Yeah, it's here over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Each week time, so.
We're in regular communication with the Verona School District as well to keep them apprised of the status of that project. So if there are any, is any need for a transition to a different plan, they've been looped in, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other question?
Can I just, could you ask Officer Brown to reach out to the superintendent in Verona of the Community Night Out? He was there last year and he said, well, we'd like to be here maybe distributing school supplies and things like that.
Sure, yeah.
I just want to make sure he, I've emailed him, but I just want to make sure he's a superintendent that's aware of it.
Yep, will do.
Thank you.
And you, oh, Jay.
Yeah, on the staffing study, there are a lot of things in there that have come up over many years, even going back to when I was mayor. And there have been discussions that have been held, but nothing's ever really come of them. The Personnel Committee happens at 4 o'clock tomorrow, which of course is a time I can't make because I work. So would it be appropriate to ask them to, since we took a bunch of stuff off of the next committee of the whole agenda, could we have them come and just chat about that?
That was not part of the contract. I can see if there would be an additional charge for that. Otherwise, obviously, the presentation tomorrow will be recorded and available for review.
I have questions, though.
Sure. Go ahead.
If you have specific questions that you know already, if you want to relate one to me, I'm happy to ask them on your behalf. And that will go for anybody if there's anything specific you want me to bring up. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Given that we're all at weird time.
Any other question? No? Okay. Thank you, Chad. Next, we move to Commission and Familiars Reports. And the first is Plan Commission. So Gabriela.
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to move to postpone ordinance 2023-010 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0123 to the October 10th meeting.
October?
Yes.
Second. Isn't this coming up at Plan Commission next week or the weekend?
I believe so, but Chad might have it more up to date.
Yeah, so the Planning and Zowing Department actually restarted the entire process because of the amended application that was submitted. So you are correct that there is a public hearing next week at Plan Commission and the city did go ahead and renotice all of the affected areas within the notification area and advised that there was an amended application as well as a new public hearing date. So basically, the process is restarted.
So, do we have a second?
Second. Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor of postponing ordinance 2023-010, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one.
I move approval of Resolution R 13723, approving amendment to the project plan and boundaries of Tax Incremental District Number 10 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0223, approving an amendment to the project plan and boundaries of Tax Incremental District Number 10.
Second.
Okay, so we are going to have a presentation. Greg, are you ready?
Yeah, I will be here in a minute.
Okay.
Mike, if you want to do an introduction first.
As the council is probably familiar, we've got three tax increment districts that are, we're bringing forward. They align with our Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives. We've got a second amendment to Tax Increment District Number 10 up in the north Fish Hatcher Road Corridor. We've got a brand-new Tax Increment District Number 16 in the Southdale neighborhood. And then we've got one on the west side of the city, TID Number 17, that covers the Anton and Arrowhead neighborhood plans. So Greg is going to take us through each of those respective project plans and the information, and then we'll have separate votes on each of the respective districts. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mike.
So as was mentioned, there are three TID actions that are on your agenda. So the first is an amendment for TID District Number 10. This is a territory amendment to incorporate new parcels into the existing boundary of the district. And the second purpose of the amendment is to increase the eligible project costs that are TID eligible within the district. The second TID action is TID District Number 16. This is a new creation. As was mentioned, this encompasses the Rimrock area and portions of the Southdale neighborhood. Portions of the territory in this district were previously within the town of Madison. And then finally, TID District Number 17, which is in the Verona School District. The western edge of that district is part of the Anton Drive area, which is a neighborhood plan that the city is looking to update as part of utilizing this TIF district. And then the eastern edge is commonly referred to as the Arrowhead area, which has also been subject to neighborhood plans in the past and will also be updated in conjunction with the use of this TIF district. There are several common elements to all three of these TIF districts. TID District Number 10 is an existing rehabilitation TID district and TID District 16 and 17 is also proposed to be a rehabilitation TIF district. We've included kind of the statutory criteria that is in place that has to be satisfied to have a rehabilitation TIF district. We've made this finding for each TIF district and so we'll explain how that criteria is applied, but just wanted to mention in the onset that all three districts are the same type of district that are being either amended or created. Some other common elements to all three districts are just the general types of project costs that have been included in the project plans. We've identified some specific public infrastructure improvements within each of the districts. Also included some allowances for development incentives that the city can choose to award as appropriate. Any development incentive that is provided is required to have a development agreement that's approved between the Common Council and the developer. Typically, the city requires developers to provide a deposit that goes through an independent review of their project to verify that the TIF assistance is necessary and appropriate. A lot of the city's development incentives are provided on what's called a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning that as increment is generated from that particular project, that is what is used to pay the incentive. Typically, the amount of the incentive is capped. If the development doesn't generate enough tax revenue to fully repay that development incentive, the city is not responsible for making up that difference. While each of the project plans identifies specific costs that are, you know, that can be undertaken within the district, I want to make it clear that by approving a project plan, the city is not authorizing any of the projects. All the projects require separate Common Council approval, just as you normally would for any public infrastructure project or approval of a development agreement. The project plan makes them TID eligible expenses, which means if you do choose to undertake them and the increment is sufficient to pay for the project, it can be a TID eligible cost. One of the legal tests that has to be satisfied to amend or create a new TIF district is called the 12% equalized value test. And how that test is applied is that you take the existing incremental value of the city and the January 1, 2023 incremental values preliminary were just released by the Department of Revenue last week. And so the incremental value of existing TID districts plus the value of existing properties that are being proposed to be added in new TID districts, those two numbers combined can exceed 12% of the city's total equalized value. And that test gets applied independently for all three of these TID actions. So all three TID districts satisfy this test. Really, when this test becomes kind of more of a applicable factor is when, as you see more incremental value grow within your TID districts, you can become what's called TIFed out. So recently, over the past couple of years, the city has closed TID 4 and TID 6 that were very large TIF districts that for a period of time had the city over that 12% threshold. Once those districts closed, you're kind of well under that limit. That means you have the capacity to legally create new districts. So all three districts satisfy that test. Next, we'll get into the details of each of the proposed TID actions. So first is the amendment for TID District Number 10. The map that we show has kind of color coding. The dark blue area was the original parcels that were in the original boundary of the TIF district. All of the light blue area was part of the first amendment territory that was added to the district. And then all the parcels that are shown in red are all the parcels that are being added as a part of this proposed amendment. So again, the primary purpose is to identify public infrastructure, development incentives necessary to help bring redevelopment opportunities within this particular area. I mentioned that each of these districts is a rehabilitation district, and so we have to verify that all of the territory within TID 10 still satisfies the criteria where over that 50% threshold. So we've listed the parcels that are being added to this district and conjunction with city staff, a review was done to kind of identify how that rehabilitation criteria could be satisfied for this district. A lot of the parcels will benefit from some proposed road improvements specifically for Bryant Road to kind of address some poor road conditions. And that's one of the criteria actually for rehabilitation districts is to kind of address infrastructure that's inadequate to kind of facilitate redevelopment opportunities. So many of the rehabilitation findings for the parcels added to TID 10 are related to those road improvements. But when you have an existing district and you're adding territory, you have to make that rehabilitation finding for the entire boundary of the district. So we've listed the parcel acreage of the original district, the amount of territory that was added for amendment number one back in 2018, the total acreage as a part of this amendment in 2023, and then the right-of-way that makes up the balance of the district. So you're looking at total acreage of about 250 acres. 194.5 of those acres meet the rehabilitation criteria, so we're at 75%. So this is a statutorily required finding. Anytime you're adding territory to the district, you have to go back and look at the district as a whole to make sure you still satisfy that criteria, which this district does. Just for reference, we've included the original projects that were included in the original project plan in the first amendment. There was about $55 million of public infrastructure improvements and development incentives that were identified as TID eligible expenses. The city retains that expenditure authority through these amendments. We've identified about $9.1 million of new project costs within the amended area. I mentioned the Bryant Road improvements. There's also some stormwater improvements, allowances for development incentives, and then some costs related to the then some costs related to the bus rapid transit system upgrades and improvements, and then various wayfaking, wayfinding, placemaking, lighting, and streetscapes throughout the district. So that total amount of additional expenditure authority is about nine point one million. Again, the project plan makes them TID eligible expenses. Separate action will be required to actually move ahead with these improvements.
Can I just add, on the development incentive category, that specifically for you, might have heard that we're looking at creating a affordable within market rate housing program, and the development incentive would give us capacity to do that for the Avalon Project along Index Road. And we're working with Greg and his team at Ellers on the development of those program parameters.
So we've included a financial illustration of TID ten to account for existing project costs that have already been undertaken in the district, as well as just projecting increment from projects that have already been approved and are in progress. The total tax increment that's estimated to be collected over the full remaining life of the district is about forty-nine million. We've included a cash flow illustration that shows existing obligations and some placeholders for potential future costs that were identified through this amendment that shows that these costs could potentially be recovered by twenty forty-two. So in terms of the existing incremental value, we've also projected some improvements that are going in along Ochella Drive, and then, as Mike just mentioned, kind of the Avalon proposed development. That's all we've forecasted in this financial analysis. Certainly, there's opportunities for additional development beyond what's been forecasted here to be constructed over the next couple of years, but we'd like to be kind of conservative when we're looking at existing districts. So with that existing incremental value that's already been generated and the forecast for additional projects under construction over the next two years, over the full twenty-seven year life of this district that is estimated to generate about forty-nine million of tax increment revenue. There are several obligations that have already been incurred under this district. There is a development incentive for the Plus Gold project that was issued on that pay-as-you-go basis as increments generated from that project. It pays off the development incentive. In twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the city issued general obligation debt to fund the TID ten portion of the Fish Hatchery Road corridor improvements, so that debt service is paid by TID ten. Then there's a development incentive that's in place for the thirty-one oh one South Fish Hatchery Road site as well. And then there was a development incentive issued for the Ochella project, and then we've just, for illustration purposes, shown a potential future development incentive and funding of additional infrastructure projects identified through this amendment, you know, in a few years. So the district is kind of recovering those costs. There's been heavy investment since the district was created, but over time, those costs are kind of being recovered. Again, we're only forecasting development within about a two-to-three-year horizon, so there's certainly opportunities for the cash flow to see benefit from future development going on. So to kind of summarize, TID ten project plan amendment, increasing eligible project costs within the district, adding some additional territory within the district to promote some redevelopment opportunities. It's the second territory amendment. Under statute, you have up to four boundary amendments that you can undertake within a particular TIF district. So that's the overview for TID ten.
Okay, so first I'm gonna ask, did the Plan Commission approve this?
Yes.
Finance committee?
Finance committee approved.
So now we all agree. Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, go.
In the project plan, you're listing nineteen-eleven Pike Drive acquisition?
Yes.
Just the, just that one building?
That was in the original project plan, Jay, when we were looking at the hotel project and the extension of what's now Ochella Drive to the
Heisee.
To the west there. But then that project didn't materialize, but it's still listed in the project plan because that was in the original one.
Okay. Are there any plans to resurrect that, or?
Not at this time. I think at that time, there was a different owner of that property, and as you know, there were significant calls to service.
Yes.
There, that property has since been sold, and that property's stabilized not only from safety, security, but also from property management maintenance. So right now, it's not on the horizon.
The other question I had is, in the, in the project plan, somewhere in here, as I was looking at it before, there's mention of rail spurs, but there are no rails anywhere near this, the boundaries of this project.
Typically, we'll leave just kind of what are generally considered eligible project costs under the statute in the project plan, just as reference. So yes, even though there's no rail spurs, it's just referencing what statute permits as an eligible expense.
Any other question?
No, that's it.
Okay, any other question? No?
No.
Okay, so, are you ready to vote for this? Okay, so, we're gonna do roll call for this one?
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Dearherd?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Martin? Excuse. Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udon?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R one thirty-eight, R one thirty-eight twenty-three, creating tax incremental district number sixteen, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries, city of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, and Plan Commission Resolution PCR O three twenty-three, establishing the boundaries of and approving the project plan for tax incremental district number sixteen.
Second.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
And did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you, so, okay. And I don't know, Mike, if you want to do an intro, we go directly to Greg.
No, I think Greg can go right into him.
So we have included the proposed map, which is in the project plan for the boundary of TID district number sixteen. This is also a rehabilitation TIF district, so we'll kind of walk through the particular project costs, but similar to TID district number ten, we've identified specific public infrastructure improvements and allowances for development incentives to facilitate development opportunities within the proposed district boundaries. In terms of the rehabilitation findings, we've kind of identified, you know, all the parcels that are proposed to be included within the district, and through staff's kind of review of each parcel, kind of identified where some of the rehabilitation criteria could be satisfied. There are some, you know, particular buildings or underutilized properties that were identified as, you know, there's potential for redevelopment or higher use, so that helps satisfy the redevelopment rehabilitation criteria. Also, some access improvements from Latitude forty-three that are some of the project costs, so it's really kind of identifying some areas in need of rehabilitation or presently underutilized that could be brought to a potential higher use. And so when we look at the total acreage of this district, including right-of-way, it's about sixty-one acres. About thirty-four point five of those acres meet the rehabilitation criteria, so we're at fifty-seven percent, so we meet that statutory criteria for rehabilitation district. In terms of the specific project costs that was identified, I mentioned the extension of Latitude forty-three drive and some of the related sidewalk and driveway apron improvements. There's also some design and reconstruction of Maloney Drive, allowances for development incentives that again would be subject to a development agreement with the common council and the developer, some neighborhood plan and market analysis and update for the Rimrock area, and then similar project costs, what we discussed for TID ten, wayfinding, placemaking, lighting, streetscaping, some multi-use path improvements, and some stormwater improvements, and then just ongoing annual costs of the district. So the total costs identified are about nineteen point six million. A portion of these project costs benefit the TID area and also areas outside of the TID district, and so you're only eligible to pay for a portion of the project that benefits the TID area. So for example, the multi-use path from McCoy to Capital City Trail, half of that is benefiting the TID, half of that is benefiting areas outside the TID, so those non-TID costs will be paid by other sources. So the TID itself has about eighteen point eight million of project costs identified. So the financial analysis summary, this is really an illustration of the full build-out potential of the district. So we've identified through some estimated land use and development for parcels within the district, about ninety-four million of potential value, and the city had some discussions with developers to kind of come up with those estimates. If that came to fruition over twenty-seven years, that would generate about thirty-nine million of tax revenue, and we've developed a similar cash flow model just to illustrate how these costs could be funded. So in terms of the development assumptions, we've identified key parcels within the district and the anticipated land use, whether it's commercial or mixed use, hotel, apartments, office, townhouses, and kind of phased in some estimated construction over the first eleven years of the district. So that's where that ninety-four point three billion of value is forecasted. Over twenty-seven years, that value would generate about thirty-nine million of tax revenue over twenty-seven years. So in terms of the cash flow illustration, really the key to successful financial management of a TIF district is to match the pace of expense with the pace of development. So if the city is looking to invest in infrastructure, you know, match that infrastructure investment with the timing of development, so you have tax increment revenue to pay for the project costs. And similarly, to development incentives, you typically don't award a development incentive until you have a commitment that the developer is going to, you know, build development with a certain value and within a certain timeframe. So this cash flow model just illustrates that concept. You would undertake, you know, financings for infrastructure once you have, you're a few years into the TID and you have some increment available, and then you would award development incentives as projects come forward. So, you know, in this illustration, the TID district would be in position to close by twenty forty-three. This is very much a high-level illustration. How the district develops will certainly depend on kind of development proposals and interest, but this gives you kind of the flexibility to kind of implement specific infrastructure projects and development incentives as needed. So that's the, the primary purpose for TID district sixteen.
Okay, Mike?
Sure. If I could just add, the development assumptions for the vacant land, that's still in the novation campus. Those came from our development partner, Alexander Company over there, and I think, hopefully, if the TID is approved, not only tonight, but by the joint review board, we'll have some projects coming forward kind of west of Rutabaga and then south of the pond on Rimrock Road.
Jay? So I have a couple other questions about this one. This one also lists the rail spur in it, and this one has a rail line. So in the project plan, you're identifying a lot of the property on the eastern side as TOD, which is what we had identified in the Southdale plan anyway, because we were going to need to upgrade that rail line, but I don't see anything identified in the project plan for upgrading the rail line.
Yeah, I guess at this point in time, I don't think the rail's in maybe the horizon for the life of this project plan. If something changes, I think we would come forward with an amendment if there's, you know, new information. Let's say that, you know, there's a rail initiative that's moving forward, you know, within the region, then we could come back forward, you know, with an amendment.
And also
We've got four that we could do.
Sorry. Also, we, if you say, for example, some of the project costs that you've had identified for whatever reason don't come to fruition or aren't needed, the way we've written the language in the project plan is that you have the flexibility to kind of exchange projects for different purposes. So if a road project doesn't come to fruition by including that language for the rail spur, there's other language in the project plan says the city reserves the right to adjust and reappropriate project costs between project types without having to amend the plan if you're staying within the same expenditure authority. So you have a fair amount of flexibility within the plan, and then if, you know, you do complete all the projects and other costs come forward, you have the opportunity to amend it, and there's no limit to the number of project plan amendments you can undertake that, that would involve updating or changing the project cost. You can do that as many times as necessary.
One other thing that we had in there, Jay, was the update to the Southdale neighborhood plan, just to kind of do a refresh of that plan, and one of the things that we wanted to do was also have some really good kind of resident and neighborhood engagement as part of that process, and that's one of the reasons I think you and I talked on the phone about leaving out the larger multifamily properties at this point in time until we get a better handle on kind of the future of those properties and the motivations of the property owners and property management companies.
Well, one of the concerns that I had, because I was on the original Southdale Neighborhood Plan Committee, and when we identified that section as being TOD, that was, that was done intentionally because of the rail line. And what has happened since then is somehow, and I do not know how, but somehow, there's a big giant storage building that got built, and the city of Pittsburgh did not use its extraterritorial zoning power to prevent that from happening. So, so what we've done is instead of advancing toward TOD, we've taken a giant step backward by putting in a building that's gonna be there for twenty, thirty years, probably. And, you know, I, I don't understand all this demand for storage. People are just buying too much stuff, but that's a different issue. But we have, we have all these storage buildings over there that, I mean, the value of those buildings as buildings isn't very much, but of course, you know, as a rental property, they become a lot more valuable because people rent them out. But if we're trying to move toward a TOD over there, I don't understand, first of all, how that building got built and Pittsburgh didn't oppose it, because we would have had veto authority over in the town with our extraterritorial zoning authority, but I would like to, I would actually like us to see, I would like to see us do some things that move toward the TOD.
It wasn't my understanding that we necessarily had extraterritorial jurisdiction to
Of course we do. It was a township.
I think there were some nuances with that that we should ask the question of, just because it was, the zoning was permitted use, because we, we weren't excited about neither the vertical storage nor the other one that got approved here.
Yeah.
To, and we actually reached out to the town and requested and encouraged them not to move forward with that project, and they still decided to move forward with it at that point in time. But my understanding was because it was a permitted use under the county zoning that they could move forward with it, and that we didn't necessarily have veto or extraterritorial jurisdiction for it.
Okay.
I'd be surprised.
Yes, okay. And they didn't, you know, they go
Mike, you know, the TID ten, you know, that being their corridor into the city, I have no doubt it's gonna flourish, and I'm not sure I have the same warm fuzzy here that a bunch of money that, you're gonna have a lot of development that wants to come in here, I, you know. Is there something on that, something on the horizon you see? You mentioned, you know, I know, I know Randy Alexander fairly well. Is there, is there more than that?
I think, right out of the gate, I think hopefully we will see projects on this lot to the west of Rutabaga, and then development down here as well. Those are the ones that we'll probably see initially out of the gate, and then they've got kind of visions and plans for the remaining lots. They're including some office and flex space up here that's south of the current office flex buildings up there. The ones that are probably more unknown are along this corridor here, especially up here where we've got some existing buildings, and that will be based on the motivation of the property owner, and if he's interested in reinvesting or redeveloping those properties, or maybe if he's interested in maybe putting those properties up for sale, and there's an opportunity to work with another development partner. Thank you.
If I may add? Oh, go ahead, Michael.
I was just gonna say, but with our, with our model and how we approach things, we're, we're not going to issue development incentives without there being a project and a burden in hand. That's what really protects the fiduciary interests of the city, so, and they would go through that Ellers analysis for us. So based on that pay-as-you-go model, we're managing and minimizing our risk as far as the development. Thank you.
I would also add, while we don't have any projects or conversations active, both exact sciences and courts have presences in that neighborhood and parcels that are either within or adjacent to the newly created TID if it's approved.
Thank you, Jay.
Any other question? Pete?
I notice both of these, ten and sixteen, you're projecting a full twenty-seven year life. Is that, do we normally do the full twenty-seven years, or is this unusual?
I think largely that's driven by we're trying to kind of account for if all of the project costs that were identified were funded, that kind of extends the, extends the life of the district, so it's kind of an all-in analysis that kind of shows, you know, kind of full utilization of the TID. So I think as, as TIDs kind of evolve and you kind of determine what level of investments appro So I think as, as TIDs kind of evolve and you kind of determine what level of investments appropriate within the district and how that matches up with development, you can kind of hone in on whether or not that district really needs to remain open for its full maximum life. You know, annually, the city is required to convene its joint review board to go through the performance of all of its active TID districts. So there'll be a lot of visibility on all of these ones if they get created and are established, just kind of see how they're performing.
And in practice, Bill, most of our TIDs have been greenfield-oriented. These are all redevelopment, which is probably going to prolong the life of some of these districts. I always say with a greenfield TID, it's like a blank canvas and you're kind of starting out from scratch. Whereas with a redevelopment, an infill development, it's more like a puzzle where you're putting pieces together and trying to match things up. So it's sometimes more complicated to put projects and deals together there. So it's probably going to be beyond our kind of past practice just by virtue of we're looking at reinvestment, redevelopment, and revitalization. But again, we'll be good fiduciary and financial stewards of the city's dollars here as far as burden-hand projects and pay-as-you-go developer bonds.
Any other comment, questions? No? Okay, so we are ready to vote. Okay. I will ask a poll.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado is absent. Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Okay, next one.
A move approval of Resolution R 13923, creating tax incremental district number 17, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries of the city of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, and Plan Commission Resolution PCR 0423, establishing the boundaries of and approving the project plan for tax incremental district number 17.
Ted.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Thank you. Okay.
So this TID District 17 kind of incorporates the Arrowhead area and then the Anton Drive area, both of which have been part of past neighborhood plans undertaken by the city, which are anticipated to be updated as part of this process if the TID district is created. Similar, similar purpose to the other districts in that there have been specific public infrastructure improvements identified and allowances for development incentive to help promote redevelopment within this area. We've identified each of the parcels that are within the district and whether or not there is some of the rehabilitation criteria that is, that is visible for these particular sites. The primary finding that was identified by city staff really pertained to some issues regarding street frontage and kind of access due to some of the broader highway improvements that have been undertaken adjacent and through this TID district. Just kind of some reconfiguration of streets to kind of make the sites more attractive and more suitable for development. And so that's, that's really the primary finding throughout the district is kind of that street frontage that needs to be addressed. So many of the buildings on Anton, you know, previously had direct access off of Verona Road, and now the orientation's been reversed. So that's kind of the criteria that, that needs to be addressed as far as the rehabilitation. So the total acreage is about 174 acres. About 147 of those meet the rehabilitation criteria. So we're at 85%, which is well over the statutory threshold. In terms of the specific project costs that have been identified, I mentioned Anton Drive, so some of the planning and engineering related to those road improvements, some roundabout improvements, also some sidewalk improvements. There's some allowances for development incentives similar to the other TID districts. One of the costs that's a little more unique to this district is some, the burying or relocating of some power lines. And then some of the similar costs in the other districts, the wayfinding and place-making, the neighborhood plan updates, and some other specific sidewalk improvements as well. So about 24.5 million of public costs have been identified as TID eligible expenses within this district. So similar to TID 16, we kind of did kind of a full build-out analysis to kind of illustrate the full potential of the district. You know, what happens will certainly depend, be dependent on market conditions. But kind of did a similar parcel-by-parcel analysis that identified some potential development uses that could total approximately 113 million of value. If that is realized in the timeframe that has been projected, that could generate about 48.6 million of tax revenue over 27 years. And we've done a, kind of a full cash flow model that illustrates, you know, how all the project costs could be supported if that increment value is realized. So we've identified specific parcels and kind of a similar breakdown of potential land uses for mixed-use, office, commercial, hotel, kind of based on input from, again, developers over kind of the first 12 years of construction within the district. Again, this is an illustration just to kind of look at the full build-out potential of the district. You know, this is the tax projection that if that value is realized would generate about 48.6 million of tax revenue over 27 years. And then, as I said before, the key to successful TID management is to match the pace of investment with the increment that is generated. So this cash flow model kind of illustrates that concept of when potential project costs could be funded based on their anticipated phasing. And then we've just illustrated several pay-as-you-go development incentives as a potential cost within the district. Some of the capital outlay potentially could be cash-funded if sufficient increment is generated. So, you know, this district projected to close, you know, early than the full 27-year maximum life, but this is kind of a projection of kind of the build-out potential. This will be more closely monitored, you know, if approved and as development comes forward, and the city makes decisions on what investments appropriate. You know, we always look at the cash flow miles before the city makes those financial commitments to, you know, ensure there's a likelihood that the increment can support the project cost. So that's the overview of TID 17. Mike, if there's anything you want to add.
Sure, yeah, I'll just chime in on this one. A lot of this one is driven by the Verona Road reconstruction and the Key Road upgrades there. You know, along Anton Drive, we've got buildings that are kind of backwards as far as their orientation, and that's why you see the investment along Anton Drive and hopefully some reinvestment and revitalization of the existing buildings. We've also got vacant land, especially between Capek and King James Way. That is getting some interest there. It could go a couple of different directions depending on who's successful. But we're having quiet conversations with a couple of different entities on those parcels. So this one's a little bit more of a guesstimate, but to your comment, Dave, on the previous one, we wouldn't move forward with any development incentives unless we had that burden hand to kind of protect the city and our fiduciary interests. We also identified some existing sites along the corridor, like the self-storage units and the self-service car wash and everything that's over there that, from the city's perspective, we'd like to see a higher and better use. But again, that will take some property owners that are, you know, interested in maybe selling or redeveloping their property and working with us through the, through the TID district. But at least the TID, if we get support for this, puts it in our toolkit where we have that available to partner and collaborate with different developers and property owners. The power line that Greg mentioned, that's on the north end of the circle, existing buildings that they have there. And in order for them to someday do a major expansion, which they've already kind of scoped out in the Arrowhead Neighborhood Plan, that power line at minimum would need to be relocated. I don't know if we'll have the capacity to bury it, but at a minimum, a relocation will be needed to facilitate a future expansion out of north end.
Okay, I have Jay, and I have David.
Yeah, the first is just a comment about burying power lines, which you know is a happy topic for me, and I wish we would do more of it. In the TID that included...
Spoke its rocket, didn't it?
No, 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 the TID that, Orchard Point, the TID that included Orchard Point. I had actually gotten numbers from MG&E for burying those very tall poles that we have running along the road there, and the council decided to cut that project out, which is going to be a mistake that we are going to have to live with for a very long time. So I, we need to think about these projects that we include in these things. The other, I have a question about this one in particular, which is in the green section, the industrial section on the northeast side. Yeah, you've got that tiny little triangle there that is not included. What's on that parcel? Yeah.
That's just right-of-way, so actually we'll kind of straighten that, straighten that out. You're talking about this area right in here?
No, well, that, just the triangle.
Triangle to the south.
Just the triangle to the right of the bike path, yeah. That little piece, why is that not included?
I think it's right-of-way, isn't it?
I'll put it up on the city GAS, confirm.
What?
We think it's probably city-owned right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Next to the bike path?
Oh, sure.
Just a little triangle of city-owned right-of-way?
Anything's possible.
Well, anything's possible, but can we, can we amend this to include that little triangle? Because if it is...
We got to figure out what it is first.
If it is city-owned right-of-way, then...
Be patient.
Go faster, Chad.
I know, I'm sorry, dependent upon my technological skills. It just seems to make more sense to do it now than to, than to have to come back and do an amendment later if we have a project that wants to incorporate that.
If it's, if it's adjacent to the boundary and it's in right-of-way, it could be incorporated into the project. You don't have to amend the boundary to include adjacent right-of-way. I mean, like, any parcel that is, like, even this area over here, that's kind of along this corridor. I mean, all this roadway and right-of-way, that's all, that can be, that's kind of, can be incorporated in the TID district just because the boundary runs right along.
Yeah, but that right-of-way is probably owned by the state.
Sure.
That's not our right-of-way.
But for purposes of undertaking a project in right-of-way regardless of who owns it, if the boundary is adjacent to the right-of-way, the right-of-way can be improved if it's adjacent to the TID boundary.
Those, owners are not identified, but they are adjacent to property that is also unidentified, which we know is owned by Thermo Fisher. So my speculation is, is that that small parcel is also owned by Thermo Fisher, since they have the parcel to the west as well as the parcel to the east.
So can we incorporate that into the plan since it's not right-of-way? Can we just put it in and, you know, instead of having to deal with this later?
Well, we don't have a project.
Is it part of the larger parcel, though, Chad, on the other side of the bike trail there?
It is ironically a small parcel in and of itself. It is, it's not part of the blue parcel, if that's the one you're referring to.
You look at the third map in there, that, that section of the bike trail is part of the blue, same lot as the blue.
Right, but that bike trail used to be a rail line, so the rail wouldn't have had a triangular piece like that sticking, sticking up the side.
It just seems odd that, that, that triangle would be excluded from that larger...
It does, which is why I brought the question up. It seems odd that we would have excluded it from the, from the project plan.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
David?
Mike, you know, changing the frontages on those stores, you know, so they face Anton. It's not a large effort on Anton, is it, on the street, you know, maybe sidewalk along there? I'm just wondering what we gain, you know, if the stores, they're not going to be worth appreciably more by changing their front to the back, or, you know, I don't, I don't see those property values going up that much. And then the second question is, has, we heard anything, or have we heard anything from Thermo Fisher about, you know, their plans for their, their property down in this area, down near Arrowhead?
On the Thermo Fisher question first, they've been getting interest on kind of a seven-acre parcel here for potential use. And then as part of that, they would have a water lateral extension that would make this larger parcel more development-ready. They've indicated to us that while they are willing to sell this to a third party, this they're still planning to hold on to for their own purposes at this point in time. Along the Anton corridor there, I think, we want to just encourage revitalization and reinvestment and maybe, you know, smaller development incentives, and it may not generate, you know, a lot of new investment. But I think it helps to move and trend the neighborhood in a positive direction. And we've heard from Shalaiski and Patio, who is very concerned about the condition of some of the buildings along that corridor and wants to see at a minimum some reinvestment in the existing buildings. Now, let's say somebody else would come in and acquire a building and want to do a complete redevelopment and do something that would bring us, you know, significant density and valuation. We've got the capacity in the TID project plan to help drive kind of a complete redevelopment down the site as well. But that's where we're going to have to kind of follow the lead of the property owners and the developers. We've kind of set the vision through the Anton redevelopment plan. And once we get this in our toolkit, hopefully that allows us to have more serious conversations, you know, with some people. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The other question I had was about in the top, in the top, well, you have different colors than we do, but the top green section up there where the QuickTrip used to be, that used to be a PDQ.
Yeah.
That excluded piece in the middle there, I presume that's a private driveway that goes back to the condos?
Yes. And the former QuickTrip PDQ is for sale. And there has been some interest in that, but nothing definitive at this point in time.
The underground tanks have been removed, though, right? So it's probably not a C-store in the future?
Yeah, yeah, it's not going to be a C-store, and they're not going to sell it to another C-store operator.
Really?
Yeah.
Any other question, comment? Okay, so we are ready to vote. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado is absent. Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to say thanks for everybody's support. This is an important local economic development toolkit for us. And the next step now is on to the joint review board, which will be on August 31st.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for your... Okay, so next we move to public, board, public boards.
So the, just got an update, we only have two open positions yet. The utilities engineer position that Tracy had, and we have an open for environmental technicians. We've made pretty significant progress on that. And we, the other thing, Chad talking about the resurfacing, hopefully we start, and pitch roll on that. We're working on designing that right now. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Park Commission?
So Park Commission, just a couple of small things. The park over on Irish Lane, where the residents were concerned, we put up a temporary fence there, plans to put a permanent one, and the Stone and Prairie Park, Parks Department is working on letting or putting it out to get that designed.
Any update on the park?
No, I don't have an update on it, Chad.
No? You didn't discuss that in the...
We did not.
I don't know if that was agenda or not. I know that the most recent draft has been circulating among staff for final comment. I know you met with planning and some staff to provide some feedback, so I don't think anything...
Okay, okay, I thought it was coming through Park Commission. Okay. Maybe it's coming next month. Okay, Library Board, Jim?
No, I'm recording.
Commission of Asian World?
We have a meeting on Thursday.
RCC, everyone?
Our next meeting is next month, August 14th.
Okay, TTC?
We will be meeting on Thursday this week.
I have a question. In the agenda, there are a lot of topics. Those are what you guys are planning to discuss during the year? What is it called?
Yes, there are some topics on there that are going to be kind of hanging out on the agenda permanently, permanently.
Okay, so that, your idea is to discuss those topics during the week?
Ongoing, yes.
Ongoing, okay, okay.
Correct.
SEDA?
SEDA, we met on Thursday morning of the 27th. It was a short meeting because originally we were scheduled to visit General Beverage for an update, and a number of commission members were absent because of some other obligations. But they want to do a 10, so we moved the meeting to the next, next month. But we had a presentation from... But we had a presentation from Dane Bylocal, and the person presenting was Megan Stern. And she spoke of, spoke to Dane Bylocal. She addressed a number of points like why support your independence, build community, reasons to buy local, think local, be local, shape our character by giving your community its distinct personality, creating a healthier environment. It was an excellent presentation, so if anybody has an opportunity to review the last recording, I would suggest. And then, of course, Mike Zee had some announcements, but offhand, I don't remember what those announcements are, but that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Randy, and next, your next ag and rural affair.
Ag and rural, we're meeting next Tuesday.
Bicycle committee, oh, so EMS.
And there was a discussion of some of the nice equipment that Fitch Rona EMS has as far as, which is really neat, they have a chair lift, you know, they have to get people upstairs that actually has tracks on the back of it, so that people are powered up the chairs, up the stairs. And then they also talked about the new hydraulic cots that they're getting. You know, you see them, that they, they don't, people don't lift them up anymore. They're hydraulic, and they kind of lift people up, and then you can push them into the ambulance. So they're keep modernizing, and of course, they still talk about the electric ambulances, but that's it.
Uh, housing neighborhood.
We are meeting after Labor Day.
Okay, thank you, housing advisory committee.
Uh, we have not met since our last council meeting. We will do neighborhood walks on the 14th in Jamestown and Delaware.
Lance Mark, presidential commission.
We are, and meeting.
No?
No.
Okay. And chief advisory committee?
We have our meeting on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And then we have report from other commissions and committees, and we have a police facility oversight, Jim.
Yeah, nothing really new from the last meeting, but Chief Morales would like to actually set up a tour of a police facility, one newer, one older. He's gonna be putting something out, looking at either Wednesday or Saturday to do that. And also, we're looking at the committee actually touring our current police facility, just so people can understand what is being talked about when we talk about it and the meetings and everything, some of the language that's involved.
Yeah, so today we have a meeting, and the idea is to, like, for people that we don't have, you know, understand policing and police, so there are a lot of jargon there, so we want to understand, if we visit a police station, we can have an idea, what are the different components? Because we are not building an office space where you have cubes, kitchenette, and bathroom. Here we, it's a police building has different components that are unique, and they are, they have to be, you know, located in the, in the building in a specific area, so have different dimensions. So the idea was, I was, it's gonna be great for me and for you guys if we can visit and have a visual of, okay, this is how a police station look like inside, you know what I mean? And then when we go through the design, and we need to determine what are the components that we want to see in our police station, we are, I think we're gonna have a better understanding of what we're talking about, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the stations that came up today were Waukesha, Connaughtawak, and maybe McFarland and Middleton. So the chief's gonna be working, working that out, so, kept it.
For our next council meeting, we are gonna have the options, visiting issues.
That's the intent, yes, is that there will be some additional options presented. You were shared with the $44 million initial cost estimate based upon the components of that project. And then it's anticipated that you'll hopefully have a $35 million option and a $40 million option, so you can compare all of those three options and see, you know, what's included in what. Paul Woodard and Chief Morales are planning to be in attendance at the August 22nd meeting to give an update on the status of where things are at with that project, some timing, and obviously be available to answer any questions.
Chad, you guys looked at what it's gonna cost us to modify, you know, once we're out of there and the city staff expands into there? Do you have any, have you guys looked at the cost to implement that yet?
No, we have, if I recall correctly, we have set aside approximately $600,000 in CIP funding. We do not anticipate that that will be adequate funding to remodel all floors of City Hall. So we will need in the next CIP or two to refine that number more closely to what it might cost to do that. So right now, if the police facility continues on the path that it is continuing to kind of slowly move down, I don't believe occupancy is scheduled until May of 2026. So we'd be looking, obviously, at that point in time to begin a remodel of the vacated police space and move some folks out of second and third floor into that one since remodeled, and then have a plan together, you know, to probably do second or third floor after that, and then the remaining floor after that one. So we'll look over the next year or so to get some refined numbers.
Thank you. You bet.
Chad, are you talking about getting the architect actually to do, I don't wanna say cut the place, but almost a complete redesign as far as making rooms and everything, something like that?
Well, I don't know if we're looking at that as a massive remodel. I think obviously that'll ultimately be a city council call. And I think, you know, as we, you know, refine some numbers, I mean, clearly, we've delayed a lot of maintenance on this building, in particular carpet, some painting, office furniture, a lot of things have just been waiting while we've waited to see what the outcome of the police staff, police space situation is. We clearly have a need in City Hall as well, as we've talked about some of the shuffle-ups that we've had to do already, you know, moving IT to the basement and creating a few other areas. We're pretty much, for the most part, kind of tapped out here in City Hall as well. So, you know, we'll have to look at what our anticipated staffing needs are, what, you know, I guess contemporary workplace design looks like, what's our current arrangement from, you know, hybrid work options, you know, those sorts of things. Maybe some coworking space would be appropriate to have where, you know, maybe we wouldn't have as many cubicles, for instance. So it's all very up in the air, you know. I think obviously we need to plan for some bathroom remodels at some point and those sorts of things. But again, that'll be something that staff will need to put together for council to consider is what that looks like, timing and scope and those sorts of things.
Okay, so next we move to the standing committees reports, and then first is finance, so Randy.
Okay, very good, thank you. I motion to approve resolution R-150-23, approval to purchase replacement firefighting turnout gear.
Second.
And finance committee.
Oh, you?
We approved, yeah.
So.
And Chief Paul Walker is here, so we'll let him speak. So this is our annual replacement. We typically go out to bid every year. This is the specification that came in for us this year. There is some new issue out of this, but typically our gear lasts us about 10 years before we have to cycle it out. And this is those general costs.
Any questions? What happens to the old equipment?
So there's a couple of things that we will do with it. Sometimes we'll use it for training. We might outfit a mannequin or two with a couple of them. There is the potential of using it for those that don't necessarily go into a burning building, maybe somebody in training, those types of things. Sometimes it just gets destroyed because of the fact that it's just beyond its effective usefulness. There has been times in the past where it's been donated and then gone down to Mexico. There's a lot of equipment that has a tendency of making its way down into Mexico because of the fact that they're dealing with a lot of old equipment, and it's better than nothing.
How many of these do we have?
What's that?
Well, we're buying seven of these, so how many do we have total?
So in total, we have about 40 firefighters, so at least 40 sets. And typically, we try to get it to the point where we're rotating them out every five years, so they have a primary set and a backup set. So if they go to a fire and they have to wash their set, they have something to get into, and it's still within spec. So it's typically the tenure equipment that we're then cycling out. One of the things that was brought up in the finance committee meeting had to do with the PFOS associated with protective gear, and that still exists. We just don't have an effective replacement yet, so we're still buying gear with PFOS, but that's why it's important for them to get out of it as soon as possible and to wash it as soon as practical.
So Joe, do you expect when something comes out that PFOS free, that we would replace everything at once, all 40 sets? Or would we still kind of just do a, replace it every five years?
I think what we would do is a risk analysis first. We'd probably take a look at a couple of sets first before we went into a major purchase. We'd wanna see how they wear, and I mean, the last thing we'd wanna do is get the first set of gear and find out that they're falling apart, and then we just outfitted the entire department with them. So we will likely take a look at that. I know that there's a number of larger city departments that have the ability to wear test things a little bit more practically than we can, but we're keeping an eye on that. I wouldn't replace everything until we had those details.
Any other comment? So others in favor of resolution R-150-23?
We'll call, please.
Okay, I'll call, okay. Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert, aye. Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado Zabson. Alder Strassman.
Aye.
Alder Udell.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, next one, Ron.
All right, motion to approve resolution R-151-23, police department vehicle purchases.
Second.
Fin, finance.
I don't know that it's.
Finance committee did approve.
Okay, so what is this, Randy?
Uh, well, the 2024 capital improvement plan includes replacement of five police vehicles, police department vehicles. And as we know, the city purchases vehicles through the state contract or a vendor with lower quote. One of our, one of the vehicle replacements is for a fleet vehicle, and four are for squad vehicles. And the state contract pricing has not been released, but we've been warned that once the contract pricing comes out, we're going to have a very short window to place an order for 2024. So we'd wanna get that jumpstart, I guess, for lack of better words, so we don't miss that opportunity. And we do have Misty on, I don't know if she wants to speak to any numbers or if she wants to add anything.
Apparently she wants to talk.
I think you did a great job.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, any question for Randy?
Um, just, how long does a squad car last us these days?
Current replacement schedule for a marked police vehicle patrol is five years. That was, that may be a bit aggressive on the length of time, we'll see, because we transitioned to that a couple of years ago, keeping them longer. So we still don't have a real good body of work on if that's gonna cost us more maintenance.
How many, how many miles would be on those vehicles after that?
After about five years, I'm gonna guesstimate probably about $130,000 to $150,000.
Any other questions? Others in favor of resolution R-151-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so next we move to personal committee, okay, tomorrow is the.
Yeah, tomorrow, August 9th, we meet at 4:00 PM. Two things on the agenda, the Baker-Tilly organizational staffing study presentation. As I said, if you have questions and you're unable to attend, you can let me know, and I can relay those to the best of my ability, and obviously it will be recorded. You did receive an email from Sarah with some of the information already. And then the second thing is actually a police retention bonus policy and procedure. So it's looking to use some of that vacancy funding to actually pay retention bonuses to our current employees. So we're discussing that and authorizing that as well. That's all.
Thank you, public safety and human services.
Many, many events going on. Only one I really wanna, I'd like to highlight, that September 9th and 10th, I mean, it'll be going on in the city during those. There's a shorter one, a shorter one on Saturday, the 9th, or Sunday the 10th. So plan your, plan your driving around the city carefully on those, on those two days.
Sorry, man, try to plan, try to plan.
Already got one email on that, people complaining about the.
What?
The route. But usually when they do those routes, there's gonna be changes. You know, as much planning as they do, there's gonna be changes all the time. So I just hope people are patient.
Okay, so then we move to new business.
I'll move, I'll move approval, resolution R-14223, authorizing acceptance, 2023 street and park improvement bid.
Second.
Did public work approve?
Public works approved.
Did finance committee approve?
Finance committee approved.
So what is this?
This is, we have 29 streets on here, and this is our street resurfacing bid. We also have some parking lots being improved on a path. This requires, with the amendments on it, this will require 2/3 of a council, and this is being alerted to pain and doling for over $2 million for this, for this work. And we are, some of this includes work that we did not get done in 2022, I believe.
Yes, you are correct, this is two years' worth of resurfacing.
Oh, so what is 2.6 billion?
Yep.
Okay. Any comment? No?
Uh, just one comment. Tim shared the, the street improvement, like, part of the website, and there's a list of the roads between this one and the next one. I think there's 39 roads that are being redup surfaced. So I can forward that to you in case anyone wants to share it with their constituents.
Yeah, we, I just like to piggyback on that. If you look at that map, roads are kind of spread out all over the city. And we, you know, we've talked with Tim where he used to work. Every city divided into kind of districts, and they would try to have the pain in that one. And we've asked Tim, you know, give us an analysis of that, that we, you know, we would like to listen and see if that's a better way for us to move forward in the future.
Okay, so we need two sets of votes, so let's do a vote also.
Thank you, Mayor, Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Maldonado Zabson. Alder Strassman.
Aye.
Alder Udell.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So next, we move to the next one.
Approval of resolution R-14323, authorizing acceptance of 2023 ARPA street improvement bid.
Second.
Did public work approve?
Public works approved.
Did finance committee approve?
Finance committee approved.
I'll give a little update, I think Tim is there, he might have to jump in and save me, but this is, this is, I think there's 10 or 12 streets on here. Also in here, originally we had the Wayland, Wayland Road adding the bike lanes on Wayland, I think from Seminole to Fitch Rona Road, and it's very expensive, you know, $850,000, which troubles me, but we can't, won't be able to do that under this, under the ARPA fund, so we are transferring some money from the underspend on the Fish Hatchery Road. You heard Greg Ayler say we were, we had 3/4 of a million underspend on that, and we're using, so that's being commingled in with the, with the ARPA money so that we can, we can kind of get that project done. Tim, do you wanna jump in?
Misty's coming in.
He made real quick.
2/3 of a vote also.
We all defer to Misty. Tim, no worries, Tim, turn his camera on.
So Dave, you have kind of the situation, but it's the two separate projects. So that $3.2 million that we transferred from the Fish Hatchery Road was the last resolution that you guys just approved. So we have that unspent borrowed money that we need to apply to street improvement, so we're transferring that over in. This resolution, yes, we don't have enough ARPA money to pay for the whole project. It came in over budget. So what we're proposing to do is transfer the Wayland Road project. Instead of it being funded by ARPA, it will be funded by the TID closure funds. So by moving that money over to that other bucket, it frees up ARPA money to be able to pay for the overage on this project, as well as some other projects that we suspect might have some overages in the near future, too.
And also because we need to use the ARPA fund at the end of next year, too. And Wayland Road is planning to do it, what, in 2025, something like that?
Staff has not had the capacity due to turnover and other projects to actually spend much time on the Wayland Road project, so it, it's undetermined as far as timing at this point.
Thank you, Chad. It was a little unclear at Public Works. We, we thought we had until the end of the year, and it dawned on me that it hadn't got, hadn't got done to our staffing.
So does the Wayland Road project then begin, become a part of the CIP?
No, it's going to be part, well, it's going to be funded with the.
So the funding source that's currently identified for the Wayland Road was arpented that has obligation requirements by the end of 2024. What staff is proposing is to use TID closure as the alternative funding source for Wayland Road.
Which would give it flexibility in a sense of, so how do, how do we lock in a commitment as to when it will be constructed?
Hire more staff.
No, I mean, I mean, otherwise it could just float there forever. That's why I asked if it has become part of the CIP. Just, just curious on that.
Misty, we did a budget amendment to, to add the, the funding for the Wayland Road project. Was that part of CIP because we did the budget amendment?
So that one is in the 2023 budget already. So I think it was last year's CIP that that went in. So that is currently in the 2023 budget, assuming staff won't be able to do the project this year, they'll include it on the carryover list that council will see in March of '24. And then if we need to, we carry it over again the year after. So that money is already, I call it appropriated for 2023. You've already kind of told staff you want them to do that, but really, as with anything in the budget, council ultimately has control over what amendments might happen between now and then.
And I did ask at the meeting yesterday whether there was anything other than the funding source that was going to be affected on, on the Wayland Road project. And they said strictly funding source, the scheduling is not affected.
Good to know.
Okay, any other question? Comment? No? So, so we, we are going to do roll call because we need to.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Dettser?
Aye.
Maldonado's absent. Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so.
And Mayor, I just wanted to add, this was also awarded to paint and, paint and dolen. Sorry you didn't indicate that before.
So next one, who's going to read next one?
I can cover this one, so you can.
So it's a district two issues, so maybe one of the other in district two?
I can make the motion. I'll move approval of R, of Resolution R-15723, authorizing termination of parking lot easement on parkland on certified survey map number 15059.
Second.
So this item is an authorization by council to terminate a parking lot easement on parkland. Specifically, this is the site of the proposed hub project on Traceway Drive. If you recall, Plesco dedicated this land as parkland dedication as a result of their Highline project. And the CSM that was submitted and approved by council at that time did not show a parking lot easement over a substantial portion of that outlot. Obviously, the parking lot easement affects development potential for the hub project. And staff has spent a considerable amount of time negotiating and working with Plesco and the Pittsburgh Senior Housing Project to, to, to get the termination of this parking lot easement so we can continue the design process of the hub project.
Any questions? Comments? No? All of in favor of Resolution R-157-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So next we go to Mayor's Report. So, so I am, so I met with the mayor of Stoughton last week. So the idea of meeting with all these mayors is to have an idea, what, you know, what are the initiatives they're doing, if we are the challenges. You know, I'm going to tell you, we are sharing all the same pain for our housing, transportation, so, you know, vacancies in the police department, you know, so we are kind of like, there are no issue happening only to us, but it's, it's a region. So, so next week we are meeting with the town of Verona, yeah, point there, and then we are going to discuss Fitchrona, another issue, because we need to determine the funding for that project. We also met with, last Friday we, we met with Madison Metro, and it was a meeting that Madison Metro organized with all the municipality we contract servicing with them, and it was a, it was a very interesting meeting. I think they want us to, to meet regularly now, and they want to create like, what it was, like an advisory board?
Yeah, potentially an advisory.
Advisory board. And then, you know, and how the municipality can work together, and I think Monona is joining now. You know, they're going to contract with Madison Metro. So, so the idea is to, you know, to determine, you know, to, to have an update of what is going on. And I think they know that, Madison know that the future of Madison Metro is going to be the sufferer, you know what I mean? Because we are the one growing and we are going to need more, you know, services, so. I think it was a very good meeting. So tomorrow with the personal meeting, and we already mentioned a couple of times, please try to attend or, or, or watch the meeting. And also, we, Misty already started with the, with the process with the budget. So next week, the head of department will present the budget first to Chad and Misty, and then use it to me, Chad and Misty together, and then, so that one, it's the first draft, you know, I mean, like, and then, and then we're going to have an idea where is coming the budget. This is what I also want to meet with you guys, because this is an opportunity to, you know, so if you have any, you know, something that you would like to see in the budget, or I want to have an idea, what are the initiatives, or, you know, you want to see adding the budget, or coming in the budget, so this would be an opportunity, you know, for me to have your feedback, you know what I mean, to have an idea what, what you're thinking for next year budget. So.
Oh, yeah, sure on that. So I, I think Misty mentioned that the, we have a new estimate for the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was coming with that, yeah. So the new construction, we were expecting a new construction at 2.7%. It came last week and it was 3.7. So that one is great, it's going to, you know, give us some more flexibility in the budget, I would say. Yeah, that's it. Any questions? So now we're moving to others' reports, so we're going to start from here. Deal. On your end.
All right. There is a short section of Jacqueline Drive between McKee Farms Park and Cheryl that is closed now for water main replacement. Was actually out of town last week of July. I attended the, the council meeting remotely, so I had missed my chance to pet a shark at the library. Just reiterate what, a couple of things that Chad had said earlier in his administrator update, the community night out on Wednesday, August 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at McKee Farms Park, as well as the final concert at McKee for this year on August 19th. And get there early to get the 40th anniversary cookie.
And also if you would like to help also to, because I think we're going to, it's going to be a table, I do want to help, you know, it's another opportunity for you to, to, you know, to celebrate and also to enjoy communication with, you know, with your residents, so. David?
Just want to thank Gabe and the inspection department. You know, they've done a good job keeping Lower King James Way, helping keep it clean. Their efforts are, are being noticed. I wasn't here in July, but I, I had many, many complaints about people shooting off fireworks, as you all did. I quite wish you were right. What to tell my, see, I feel your pain. I don't know how these things happen, but I had a resident on Monticello Way, and he had a large potted plant, you know, he kept near the bottom of his driveway, and someone came and stole it the other night. Like, what the hell? I also want to thank the parks in our neighborhood look wonderful, so please pass that on. It's surprising with a little bit of rain, although they're really well taken care of. They look great. Thank you.
Two things for me are, I just found out today that our electric vehicles, the two Ford Lightning pickup trucks for the parks and the water utility are officially in hand, and they are here, the electric charging is in, they are being used. I'm very excited, so I saw that. I thought it was fine to point, it wasn't recorded on the meeting because we were lost audio, so I was like, I have to say it at council. So there are two electric vehicles in the city.
She could ride. I don't think she's authorized to drive.
I would like a ride, though. I should, I should ask for a ride. That sounds fun. I've heard they're great cars.
I did see one out front.
You're standing in the back. Titanic, you know.
So, very excited about that. Wanted everyone to know. And then the second thing is I heard some news today from Shine. It's the company, they're, they have their main facility in Janesville, but they have a facility here in Pittsburgh as well. They had a really cool press release come out about how they had their, I'm not going to be able to explain this well, because it's a physics concept, but basically they, basically were able to produce Cherenkov radiation, which is a visible, visible light from their fusion, which is a difficult thing to do. It's never, to their knowledge, it's never been seen with fusion technology, happens frequently with efficient technology, but it demonstrates kind of a really high level of fusion and the kind of level trending towards the level where you could actually use it for commercial purposes. So, and that's their ultimate goal. They do a lot of isotope production, but their ultimate goal is to create fusion technology, which would, if they were able to do it, would revolutionize energy production in the country and in the world. And it's just really, really cool that, that in part is happening in the city of Pittsburgh. So that, that's all over the, you know, Science News Wire. So they just put out that press release. So anyway, it's really exciting and just wanted to flag it for all the council members and for anyone that's watching.
Because I think the University of Wisconsin is, they're like two universities in the country that are doing fusion research.
Yeah.
And this is what is great for.
Yeah. And that's why Shine is here, is because of the University of Wisconsin, so. I can send that press release out to everyone if you're.
I'm right across the street from where I live, so I probably need to get some more. I probably need to get some blackout lines.
Okay, Jim?
Well, Gabriella wasn't with me when I saw that F-150 turning onto McKee. I probably had to restrain her. No, but they are some nice looking vehicles, it's good to get them out on the street, but nothing else to report.
Randy?
Nothing.
Dave? Residents are very happy to see progress on Syed Road and Lacy. I got a couple of messages about that over the weekend. And I got, I got yet another complaint about the, the Festival of Speed fireworks. So that's a total of four that I got. So I don't know what to make of that, but I, I don't, I don't recall there being complaints about it before, but.
Is that four from the fireworks, or does that include the ones from the, the music being?
Well, so it's four, four of them about the fireworks, and two of those people also added in, said the band sucked and it was too loud.
Oh, wow.
I was there, and none of the bands sucked. One guy played a saw, a camp saw.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what I got.
You can't please everybody.
Shana?
No reporting.
So, okay, so next announcement, our next common council meeting will be August 26th, and the next committee, the whole meeting, August 26th. So any questions?
Before we do that, at that committee of the whole meeting, we're going to be talking about the referendum some more, and I don't know if any of you have sent any ideas into Chad or to Misty about what you would like to see included, but please get those in so staff can do a little analysis before then.
And I also, I did need to reach out to you. We're going to do, if you're okay with it, a flip-flop of the topics from August and September due to staff availability. So we'll plan to do traffic safety portion in August, and they'll well update in September if you're good with.
That's fine.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, all of in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:25. Thank you very much.